It's six o'clock, so I think we'll go ahead and get started. And before we get started, just so you know, we're having some rolling brownouts. And if we have a brownout, it shuts us out of the YouTube TV thing for five minutes, and it shuts down our slides. I know we have one presenter that has slides. So if it happens, we'll probably take a five-minute break. If it happens a second time, we're just going to proceed on because it could happen periodically. So just so everybody knows, so that you're not in the dark, so to speak. So why don't we go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance? The flag is up here to your right over there.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
The next item is approval of the agenda, and we have one modification we want to make. Our legal team is not able to be here tonight, so we want to pull item 60, which is the partnership agreement, and we will move that to the August 9th board meeting so our legal team can be here. So I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda with that modification.
So moved.
A motion by Amber and a second by Chris. Any further discussion? Assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Item three is approval of the minutes from July 12th, which is on pages two through five. Any additions, corrections?
I have one correction. For on the first page, second column where Flynn was declared, it says the president should be the vice president of the 2021, 2122 board.
Thank you. We have a second by Cynthia. Any further corrections, questions? Seeing none, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. All the citizen comments cards I have are for, oh, no, not the first ones. Well, I guess I do, they're both. David Waterman, why don't you come, do you want to come forward and talk about critical race theory, since that's not on the agenda? And if any of you have spoken before and don't have anything new to say, we just want to hear new things for anybody. So, Mr. Waterman.
I'm David Waterman. I've lived in Grand Forks since 1971, graduated from Red River High School at the University of North Dakota. My wife and I have raised three boys in Grand Forks. And I understand that in the fall, that masks will be considered optional, but I'm wondering why they're going to be considered at all, since it's now known that masks cannot stop COVID-19. It is physically impossible for any mask, including a properly fitted N95 mask, to stop COVID-19. And that combined with the fact that children, as a rule, don't get COVID, and they certainly don't get very sick from COVID if they do get it.
Mr. Chair, just a point of order. I think we have that item on our agenda. So I think Dr. Lund was asking about the-
You have two different subjects you want to talk about.
Yes.
Critical race theory is not on the agenda. Would you mind just talking-
Just addressing that?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. Parents in the city still send their children to public school to learn reading, writing, and arithmetic. They want their children to be able to play sports, or to sing, or to learn an instrument, and perhaps develop public speaking skills through speech or debate, and eventually become productive members of society. They do not send their children to public school so they can become radicalized by being taught to hate America, or their heritage, or the less than perfect founding fathers. They do not send their children to public school so they'll be taught to hate each other based on each other's shade of skin, which many people, including a lot of races, wrongly refer to as skin color. That's not why parents send their children to public school. No Grand Forks parent wants you to teach their children to hate anyone, including themselves, their neighbor, or their country. That might be what the communist-backed BLM wants, that might be why races promoting critical race theory by that or any other name want, but that's not what Grand Forks parents want. That's not why we pay taxes, or your salaries, or the salaries of teachers, many of whom are fine men and women who are just trying to provide the best education for the children that they can. We don't want anti-American, anti-Christian, or anti-white groups turning our public schools into child indoctrination centers of hate, and we won't stand for it if anyone tries to do that. I would like to briefly quote. Abraham Lincoln said, "The attitude in the classroom today will be the attitude in government tomorrow." Herbert Hoover said that "Our children are our greatest resource." Thank you.
Thank you. Jean, where are you, Jean? Oh, I couldn't tell. Are you wanting to talk about masks and mandates, or critical race theory, or what did you want to talk about? Okay, go ahead. Why don't you go ahead?
Hello. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you again. I'm Jean Gullix, nurse practitioner, child development specialist, and faculty at the medical school. I was looking at your Grand Forks Public Schools website, and of course, looking at the mental health issues. That's my specialty. And at the top, it says, "What do we mean by mental health?" And it says, "Just as physical health is more than the absence of disease, mental health is more than the absence of mental illness," which is definitely true. And in the paragraph, it says, "In fact, the research shows that the number-one protective factor in a child's life is enduring connections to caring, supportive adults. We care about students' academic achievement, but more importantly, we value their mental health and overall well-being." And I have talked to and know several teachers who say they cannot be caring, they cannot be supportive, they don't know what's going on with their kids. There's a lot of crying, and a lot of them are behind in work. So by valuing their mental health and overall well-being, it seems like the developmental literature has been ignored, because I was told that you go by the CDC recommendations. They are medical, they don't look at mental health except suicide attempts, which right now are the second cause, suicide is the second cause of death in North Dakota in 10- to 34-year-olds. I had a nine-year-old and several other students that are less than 18 years old, who have been in the emergency room for suicide attempts. And a lot of that increase, which has increased nationwide 88 times, in North Dakota, the increase has kept up, and it's now the second cause of death in that age group. A lot of the students fear hurting someone else. They've not been able to play on their teams. They've lost scholarships. The irony of, the irony of what we're doing, separating the kids, the masks, the vaccines, which aren't even approved yet for under 12-year-olds, is that that's causing more emotional distress, more deaths, and more illness than them being allowed to play and be children, be with their parents. Parents have had, are very afraid, have talked to us, of having their rights taken away, that their kids will be forced to do things that they don't even know about. The tests that have been done over the years, the months, PCR tests have now been rescinded by the American Medical and the CDC, stating that those tests were only designed for research, which we've known that all along, and that they didn't differentiate between flu and COVID. So now they're coming up with a new test. So we don't even know what's flu and what's COVID, except in North Dakota, in the last 14 days, and 14 days before that, the number of cases in this state right now of COVID, which might include flu, is zero percent, with zero hospitalizations. You have a page in your Grand Forks Public School data of student and certified staff percentage of positive.
Jean, could you please kind of wrap it up here over three minutes? So thank you.
Those percentages cannot be combined, because as you know, as we all know, the percentage of incidence in children is significantly lower than that of adults. So it's actually inaccurate to combine those two categories.
Thank you. The rest of the citizens' comments will come with that agenda item when we get to it. Let's move on to item five, superintendent's recommendations for discussion, review of school board meeting norms. Shannon.
Be prepared, be on time, value and respect each other, exercise thoughtful deliberation in conversation, be professional at the board table and when visiting with the general public, speak up when the norms are not being followed, and advocate on behalf of the students and keep the community in mind.
Thank you. Let's move on to item B, which is West Elementary School sale process, which is on electronic pages seven through 11. Dr. Brenner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I will turn this over to Mr. Burge, who has a memo, again, on page seven. And Mr. Arnold is not able to be with us this evening due to a family commitment, but, Mr. Burge, you can go ahead and handle that. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just read through the memo here briefly. West Elementary School has been cleared of school-related material items and valuable equipment. The building is vacant and ready for sale in accordance to the North Dakota Century Code 15.10933.6. Grand Forks Public School District has the authority to purchase, sell, exchange, and improve real property. West has been closed to students since February of 2020, and was officially closed by the board at the April 14th, 2020, school board meeting. District Legal Council and the Grand Forks Historic Preservation Commission were consulted regarding the potential sale of West Elementary, and the correspondence by both the Legal Council and the Historic Preservation Society have been, are attached. Administration would like to require a formal site visit by potential bidders, as well as a formal bidding process, including parameters for the proposed use of the property, timeline for development, examples of similar projects completed, and purchase price. This would be accomplished by running an ad for three weeks, collecting sealed bids, and compiling the results. Final selection would be made by the board from the results list. A sale could remove the property from the district prior to the upcoming heating season, greatly reducing the demand on our staff to maintain the facility. And there will also be a celebration, a picnic at West Elementary School planned for August 18th.
Questions or comments from the board to Mr. Burge or any of the administrative staff? Shannon, go ahead.
I just had one question in terms of the parameters. I couldn't tell from the memo whether that was indicating that Grand Forks Public Schools District was setting the parameters for what can happen, or if we were just asking the developers to submit what those parameters would be.
Yeah, the meaning really was, you know, really what follows that. So we're, you know, what we would be looking for, you know, really administratively, would be, you know, the, what the proposed use of whoever the bidder, what their intended use of the property would be, and their timeline for development, examples of similar type work that they have done in the past. So really, we're, you know, to gather data from the bidder as to, you know, what their intentions are, along with what the price would be. So it, you know, administratively, we would gather the bid information, but the board itself would be the one making the decision on selecting a bidder or a potential offer.
Dr. Brenner, do you have anything you want to add to that?
I just wanted to add that we've worked with City Planner Ryan Brooks with planning and zoning, because we certainly have a perspective that we want that neighborhood to be redeveloped into single-family homes. You know, that could be one of the parameters that we request. Right now, it is Zoned R1 for single-family homes. That would certainly be my perspective to help feed and redevelop that neighborhood.
That was going to be my follow-up, because it's kind of one of those soft qualitative things, that how do we then sort of rate if we're going to do an apples-to-apples comparison of bids? So I was going to ask if, you know, if there is that desire, it should be part of whatever we post to say the desire of the school board is to maintain whatever the characteristics within that community as it currently stands, or whatever language legal and, you know, in consultation with whoever we're working with would recommend, just to make it easier on us as a board to weed through the bids.
Other questions or comments from board members? Thank you, Scott. Let's move on to item five, C, which is Career Academy CTE Discussion on electronic pages 12 through 57. And Dr. Brenner and Keith, just so you know, we're having, Eric may have told you, we're having some rolling brownouts, so if the slides go down, it's because it's one of those rolling brownouts. But I'll turn it to Dr. Brenner, who I'm sure will turn it over to you.
Page 12 of the board package, you can see a memo from me. Just want to highlight a couple of things from this memo, that $70 million worth of CARES dollars that are federal dollars flowed through the state of North Dakota, and the legislature decided that they would have a competitive application process for career academies, CTE centers, whatever you'd like to call them, to really assist with the school-to-workforce pipeline in the regions around the state, and for us in particular, the Grand Forks region. We've had conversations going on for several months regarding workforce and workforce development, how the school could be a partner with lots of different agencies between Keith Lund, Becca Kruger from the EDC, industry business leaders, the city, UND, Northland Tech, Lake Region State, and UND. And there seems to be a desire to move forward with getting an application ready. We initially thought it was going to be December 1st, but we want to be a little more aggressive, is what I'm understanding from the planning committee, that October 1st would actually be the deadline. And just full disclosure, while these conversations were taking place, it was my desire that this would not interfere with the referendum on June 22nd. We didn't want to have multiple messages out there about the potential of a new facility while we're asking the taxpayers to assist us with our facility. This is a completely different concept, and I'm just happy that Keith is here this evening, the CEO and President of the EDC, along with Becca Kruger. They have some slides to present to us. Also, Eric Ripley, our Executive Director of Career and Technical Education, is here. He'll be able to respond to questions as well. He's been on some of the tours that were in Ohio, Oklahoma City, and Sioux Falls, and Vice President Amber Flynn was part of at least one of those, two of those tours. So I will stop there. We'll turn it over to Mr. Lund. Thank you very much for your time this evening, sir.
Do you want to hit the, there you go.
Oh, there you go. Start over with the formalities. President Lund, Superintendent Brenner, members of the school board, as mentioned, my name is Keith Lund, President and CEO of Grand Forks Region Economic Development Corporation. It's a real pleasure to be with you this evening to talk about CTE, Career and Technical Education Center, that many folks are talking about. As the superintendent mentioned, there has, the state of North Dakota has made available $70 million of funding to provide for the expansion of centers across the state of North Dakota. I'm going to talk, just to make some opening remarks, and then I'm going to turn our presentation conversation over to Becca Kruger, who's our Workforce Development Manager, who really, from the EDC standpoint, is providing tremendous leadership and coordination to this effort. Just wanted to make a few comments ahead of that, though. As Dr. Brenner mentioned, this is very much a community effort in terms of this exploratory phase. We put together, we've brought a number of leaders around the table to take a look at this. I'm sure most of you, if not all of you, have read the Grand Forks Sheldon article that appeared on Saturday to talk a little bit about those community efforts, and we're extremely thankful for that coverage. I do want to make a couple of clarifying comments about that. The headline I wouldn't have chosen said something about the EDC and sort of spearheading, and while we're very happy to be a part of this leadership consortium that's looking at this, and we have done a couple of things in terms of getting a grant to work on some sort of exploratory work, this really is a community conversation. So from the school district, Superintendent Brenner and Mr. Ripley have been very involved, and Ms. Flynn from the board has been on a couple of our visits that Ms. Kruger is going to outline. We also have representation from other school districts, Thompson and Hillsborough specifically, in terms of bringing this, in terms of regional education effort. University of North Dakota, Lake Region State College, Northland Community and Technical College are at the table, the city in the chamber, and, you know, from our standpoint, you know, this is a workforce development, population retention effort. Private industry is at the table, and they're in many ways leading this discussion in terms of what industry needs, in terms of retaining population and workforce. We had a presentation, really, this presentation at the EDC Advisory Board last week. Dr. Brenner was there and very much participated and provided great leadership in that conversation. I think it's fair to say that the EDC board and our advisors and the industry folks that were involved in that were very excited about the possibility of something like this happening in Grand Forks. So I think this is a tremendous opportunity for students in our region to really leverage the great education that they get from Grand Forks Public Schools and the school systems around the region, and to really align K-12 post-secondary and industry to get them to their chosen careers more efficiently, in many cases, a little bit more cheaply than if they chose the typical path. And in the cases where students really don't have an idea, it really provides a tremendous opportunity to explore some career opportunities to make better decisions as they move forward. So with that, I'll just once again say thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. Becca will walk through a presentation, and Ms. Kruger, and then she and I, and I assume Mr. Ripley, in terms of the school district's participation, will be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Good evening, school board members and superintendent. I am happy to be here, and thank you for inviting us to talk about one of my favorite subjects, which happens to be workforce. We're going to talk today about the CTE Workforce Center that Grand Forks Community Coalition of Leaders have been working on, and also invite a conversation here today with the school board to talk about the next steps going forward. So tonight, I'm going to talk about what is a CTE center. I'm going to talk about the current opportunity on the table, and how we're knocking on that door. And then also, I'm going to talk about how we're working to make that vision for a CTE center a reality here in Grand Forks. So one of the first questions that people always ask is, why do we even need a CTE center? Grand Forks Public Schools, as you know, has a pretty robust CTE programming built in, and we have an area CTE center as well. But one of the things that a CTE center does is becomes a building that's not just nine to five. It's not just for K-12 students. It's also for adult learners, and it provides a robust workforce pipeline by introducing students to regional careers in high-wage, in-demand career fields, and introducing them to employers. So building intentional pipelines to introduce students to careers here. Also, labor constraints aren't going anywhere. One thing, if you talk to any employer or industry personnel in the region right now, they're struggling to find workforce to fill all of the positions that they have available, and we'll talk about that a little bit. That's not a unique to Grand Forks situation. That's something that's happening across the nation, and it's something that's projected to continue to be a challenge. So if we don't address it as a community right now and get ahead of the problem, it will be something that- the problem, it will be something that is going to harm our future ability to recruit and retain industry here in Grand Forks. So as I said, it provides real-world learning spaces to help students receive hands-on training, develop skills and knowledge necessary to be career-ready and college-prepared. So I'm going to talk about that a little bit, too. Some of the myths that come about CTE centers is that they're only for high schoolers. So I talked about this. CTE centers really are not a nine-to-five facility. In fact, in the grant opportunity that I'll be talking about, you must show as a community how you're serving both K-12 learners and then also adult learners. So they should have dedicated pathways for both of those constituents. This is an example. We had the opportunity to tour some CTE centers, as Superintendent Brenner stated before, and one of these was in Moore Norman, Oklahoma. And so this is an example of a career pathway that they have within their CTE center. You can see it's open for both adult learners and high schoolers. So as a high schooler, you can come out with a CNC machining certification and get a high-wage job without having to go on to pay for that training. Additionally, if there is an industry that wants to train their incumbent workers and upskill them, the CTE center can serve as a training facility for them after the traditional nine-to-five. This is another good example, CPR and first aid. High schoolers can get trained in both CPR and first aid, training them for medical careers, or say, an All True could use the facility to train their workers for, and recertify them for CPR on a yearly basis. Another myth is that CTE centers are only for those students who don't really do well with traditional learning. And that simply isn't the truth. CTE centers provide a pathway for both the trades and construction, but also for those who want to go on and receive traditional college education. So we would be looking to set up a CTE center here that provides a pathway to both college and those opportunities for students to hit the ground running without all the student debt that comes along with it. A good example of this, again, going back to Moore Norman, they have a cyber defense or cybersecurity. That's certainly an industry that has been growing here in Grand Forks, is the unmanned and autonomous systems. There's a huge need for tech workforce in Grand Forks right now. And so cyber defense, students can get certifications while they're still in high school, and learn about things like Linux programming and programming in different languages, and then go on. You can see the list of potential educations that they would need additional education to pursue those career paths. Whereas, there's also paths for students to get careers directly out of college. This is an electrical apprenticeship that's available at Moore Norman. So while in school, or in high school, they're learning all about how to become an electrician. They're becoming credentialed and certified in OSHA construction safety, and then earning all of those snap-on certifications as well. So that reduces the cost for them to be trained afterward, after high school, and allows them to explore that career with hands-on activities while they're still K-12 learners. So some of the things that we are looking at right now, and the big opportunity on the table, the North Dakota Department of CTE has released a grant, $70 million made available. And each community can apply for up to $10 million. Those have to be matching one-to-one funds. This is a one-time opportunity. These are provided by federal CARES Act dollars, so we don't expect these types of funds to come down the pipeline anytime soon. Again, you are very familiar with some of those funds that have come out for your school district. And so we, as a community, really are looking at how we can capitalize on these for this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. We also know that we're going to have a lot of competition. These are all the communities that we know plan to apply. We've had conversations with many of these communities and community leaders to learn about what they're doing, and also, some of them are a little further along in the planning process than we are. So we've been able to really pick up some of their best practices and be a step ahead on the legwork. So again, these funds are not likely to come around again, and so if we really don't act now as a community, we're going to fall behind and be one of the only communities in North Dakota that does not have a CTE center. The Leadership Coalition certainly does not want that to happen for our community. Speaking of the Leadership Coalition, it was mentioned who has been involved in this process. And what we have done is put together this Steering Committee of Community Leadership, including the city, the EDC, the chamber, as well as educational leadership. So Grand Forks Public Schools has been very involved. And then also, leadership from Thompson Public Schools and Hillsborough Public Schools, as well as all of our post-secondary educational institutions. And then we have some very strong industry leadership as well. One of the things that we've been doing, we received a grant, as Keith said, from the Department of Commerce called the Partners in Planning Grant, and that allowed us to carry out some community tours to learn best practices. So we went to Moore Norman. We also attended Great Oaks, and then three different other CTE centers in Ohio. And last week, we attended a Sioux Falls CTE tour. We learned a lot of different best practices. For example, this is the biomedical dental lab at Warren County CTE Center. And one of the things that we learned is having classroom space directly by hands-on learning labs was very beneficial, because students could learn from your traditional book or curriculum, and then go do and practice directly in the lab space. We also, this is another good example, the Rabantech Electrician Program. Over on the right-hand side there is the classroom learning space, and then they walked directly out into the lab, so they learned first, and then came out and did. So it really gave students that hands-on, practical experience. Keith even learned how to build a house. That's not true. But probably, the biggest best practice that I learned is, I thought our school superintendent had a very good hair game, but best practice, we had some competition there. But going back to some of the things we've done to get to this step, we also hired Praxis Strategy Group to analyze available labor markets, and we conducted two surveys, including student surveys and industry surveys, to really help us say what should be in the CTE center, and how should it serve the community. So I'm going to share some of this with you. Really, what we looked at was the employers or the occupation side, and then the education and training, so the programming side, which really leads to those career clusters. So on the student survey results, here are some of the things we found. We had 825 total responses. We do plan to also administer a survey in the fall to our rural school districts who will be participating in the CTE center. So this is only Grand Forks Public Schools. There was a 90% completion rate, 392 students from Red River, and about a little over 300 from Central, ranging all the way from eighth grade to 12th grade. One of the questions we asked is, how much thought have you given to what you plan to do after high school? And roughly 80%, a little over 80%, said that they had given some or a lot of thought to what they planned to do after high school. Not a lot of people said that they wanted to give very little thought to what they planned to do after high school. And just for your reference, we are working on dashboards, so you can, you'll be able to manipulate the data. If you want to break that out by eighth grade, or ninth grade, or 10th grade, you'll be able to do that. We also asked if they had already decided what type of career path or job they plan to pursue after high school, and about 53% said, yep, I know exactly what I want to do. And 47% said, no, I don't think I know what I want to do yet. What was interesting to me was this slide. We asked students if they really understood what types of careers options are available to me in the Grand Forks region. And you can see up there, almost half of them said, yeah, I know what type of career opportunities are available. And me, as an adult, I don't even know all of the career opportunities that are available in the Grand Forks region. So this was an interesting slide. Students definitely think that they know the career options available to them. I know this is very small, so I'll cover this, but we asked them how interesting they found the following types of career. And why I think this is important is, up at the top, what you'll see is some of those really traditional career clusters. So the health sciences, business management, marketing, arts and communications, and human services. Those are careers that students know and hear a lot about. And then, when you look at some of the other ones that are really emerging in our region that provide high-wage jobs, such as manufacturing or instrument technician, welders, things like finance or hospitality and tourism, those fall all the way down at the bottom of interest. One thing that became very clear, the orange bars are the career paths that students found extremely interesting, and the blue bars are career paths that students found extremely uninteresting. It seems like students really know what they don't want to do, more than they know what they do want to do. So that was something that was interesting to us. And then, again, going back to students who really believe that they know about the careers available to them, we asked students if they knew enough about the careers to really say whether or not they'd want to go into it. And less than 10% of students clicked on that, I don't really know a lot about this career path. So again, that just goes back to students really thinking that they definitely know about the career path, the options that are available to them. So we also asked them about who really helps make their decisions, or ties into their decision-making when it comes to careers. And what they said is, their interests or preparing for college would be the top two things, ranking it at 83 and 57%. Then, how, preparing for a job or hitting the labor market, 56%. And then, the difficulty or easiness of classes, and opinions of others, including parents, or school counselors, friends, families, or teacher advice, fell much below their interests. So we also asked what factors were really important for them when they were making their decisions, and a job that seems interesting or fun, or lines up with their career interests, hit the top. And then, this was something that was a little surprising to Praxis Strategy Group, was the amount of money that they could make ranked right up there as well. So our messaging is really important, is getting information about potential career paths and salary information might help sway the decision of students into what types of careers that they want to choose. Down at the bottom, opinions of friends and family, advice from high school counselors, and information they get from the media. So we wanted to know, of course, about student interests, because when we're deciding what courses or programming goes into a CTE center, that's going to be a very heavily-weighted decision, because if we create a set of courses that nobody wants to enroll in, that's not going to serve anyone. We also engaged employers, because through the grant guidance that I'll talk about a little bit later, it states that we have to align our CTE offerings with industry demand, and also consider emerging careers. So we received, so far, 107 responses from industry. These are the types of industry ranking, from healthcare to construction to manufacturing to education, all the way down the list. We asked, in general, how difficult or easy it was for them to recruit or hire employees, and a lot of them, right now, are going back to that labor-constrained environment. 83% said it's somewhat difficult, or very difficult to do that. We also asked them if a lack of workforce supply was preventing their organization from growing and negatively impacting, and the answer to that, 64% yes. So when you think about businesses that are economic drivers to our community, providing taxes to our school district, and taxes to things like our roads and infrastructure, this is inhibiting their economic growth. In fact, of those just over 100 employers, we said, if you had a magic wand and you could fill all of your positions today, how many positions or additional people would you hire? And they said nearly 1,600 people. So that would be 1,600 people, and their family members that would be contributing to our community, financially and otherwise. This is a slide that I just wanted to provide to you. It's talking about, again, the difficulty or ease to fill those positions in various career paths. I'll let you explore that a little bit in depth, or perhaps you have. But protective services, they said that is pretty easy to fill, but then you go into things like architecture, engineering, or educational instruction, or you go into construction and trades, and they say it's very hard to fill those positions. The three toughest occupations that we're said to fill were management, installation, maintenance, and repair, and then business and financial. We also learned that construction, trades, and officer administrative support. And that could go back to who was filling out to survey. These are preliminary results, so we will provide a final report to you on this as well, as results continue to come in. The most significant barriers to hiring that employers are facing are lack of trained workers locally, what employers can afford to pay. And a lot of them felt that lack of awareness about opportunities in their industry was really hurting them. So again, this is where something like a CTE center could really get in front of students to make them aware of regional career opportunities. So we also asked, you know, if workforce challenges were limiting the prosperity of the region, and most employers agreed with that. We asked if career and workforce center programs are worth pursuing, and again, nearly 70% said, yep, absolutely. We asked if private sector employers should then collaborate with educators and local government entities to help improve that. And again, very strong support, nearly 80%. And then, we asked them, well, if it's very important to you, should you buy into this? And again, we have about 50% of our employers said that they'd be willing to financially contribute to this. So where do we go from here? There's this grant opportunity, and Superintendent Brenner alluded to the fact that there's two application rounds. The first deadline is in October 1, and $35 million of funds will be awarded during that round. And then, there will be a second round, December 1, where the remaining funds are up. And if nobody, if the funds aren't all allocated at that time, they will open up a third round after that, but nobody expects for that to happen. To be in the best position, we do intend to try for that October 1, but there's a lot of things that we have to do in order to make that happen. We have put together five different subcommittees that are hitting the ground running and actively working on helping with that grant application. First is governance and budget. We really need to figure out who's going to own this, what the budget looks like to build it, but more importantly, what the budget looks like for ongoing operations. The second thing would be facilities. Where is it going to go? What's it going to look like? How's it going to house the programs and have what we need? We actually have to have blueprints in order to be competitive in our grant applications, so we do intend for that to happen. The third is curriculum and programming, and that's going to look at what types of programs are being offered, certifications that might happen in that programming, dual-credit opportunities, if that's something that we can pursue as well, industry engagement and fundraising. So we'll be approaching community partners, as well as industry partners, to help with the fundraising of this, because we do intend to pursue a $10 million one-to-one match in order to have the kind of facility that we're hoping would serve students and industry. And then, community engagement and public relations. We're really unveiling this to all of our community partners over the course of the next next couple of weeks. So again, thank you for having me here today to talk about this opportunity. And really what we want to say is we're here to build our workforce pipeline together. It's going to take all of us in order to make something like this happen. And so we have a lot of committed partners, and I really hope the school board will become one of them. And I'll stand for questions.
Beck, I think before we go to questions and comments, I'd just like to give Mr. Ripley and Ms. Flynn an opportunity to speak if they want to. Eric, do you have some words you want to say?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Becca. And then we'll get back to the questions and comments.
Sure. I certainly appreciate the opportunity. Eric Ripley, Executive Director of CTE Technology for the school district. And I spent my entire career in this school district in the current technical education space, going on my 23rd year. And so CTE is what I know. That has been my professional background and certainly a passion of mine. And can't underscore the comments that Becca and Keith had provided to you, talking about, really, if you go back to the history of the funding of current technical education in the state, the last investment of funds in infrastructure facilities would have been the 1970s when they stood up physical CTE centers in communities like Grafton, Jamestown, Valley City, et cetera. And now there's a 50-year delay, okay? And in that space, for a while, there was some funding for a virtual area center. And so you've heard me come up here before and talk about the virtual Grand Forks Area Career Technology Center. We're one of eight school districts, including the seven that surround us, to deliver and expand upon CTE program in those rural communities, mostly through online education. What we've learned in that 10-year process is some courses deliver themselves well in that environment. Other courses, because of their hands-on nature and the need for specific lab equipment, do not deliver themselves well in that environment. What we're envisioning is to build upon the momentum of the virtual area center by being able to provide some of those hands-on specific courses. I'm certainly very proud of the CTE programs we have in the district. We're well-known across the state, the region, and at the national level, honestly, as being one of the premier CTE programs that's out there. And that is really a large credit to our staff and our students and the support of the district and the board for those programs. It's not because of the facilities. Our facilities definitely lack. We have CTE programs that were in buildings and classrooms that were never designed for what we're delivering them. Medical careers might be a great example, okay? You take a traditional classroom and you could teach medical careers in that. But if you look at a medical careers classroom, it looks like a hospital classroom setting. We don't have the space for that. We don't have the ability to do that. A facility would allow us to expand on that. We also have certain emerging careers that we'd love to be able to provide and offer. It takes lab space and it takes equipment to be able to do that. And so we certainly have been a little restricted in the ability to provide emerging CTE career opportunities because of the facilities that we have and trying to do the best we have with what we have. And a large part of that is there just hasn't been a lot of funding from the state level to be able to invest in infrastructure. This provides an opportunity to certainly do that. And again, represents really once in a professional career opportunity to strengthen our CTE programs for the next generation. And so I'm certainly displeased that really this has been an easy conversation with our partners at the EDC, the Chamber, the city, you know, post-secondary level industry partners. This is something that everybody is rallying around and certainly is something that has my complete support.
Thank you, Eric. Amber, do you have any comments?
I was honored to be a part of the tours. I went to Oklahoma in Sioux Falls. And one of the things that I quickly realized in being in conversations with our community partners was that we've been talking about this for a really long time. I remember when I was in health careers class at Central High School, it's a room no bigger than that back area with tables and desks with a gurney and a medical doll situated, kind of shoved into the back. If you walked into the classroom when it was dark, you certainly got a surprise. But it wasn't set up like a lab setting. It just was really a gurney bed with a doll there. And so we were in that classroom for two hours a day, mostly just sitting in desks, watching videos. Certainly, that was a few years ago. But I started, you know, thinking about my own experience and, you know, I wanted to be a nurse, but, you know, most of the hands-on experience was just sort of like job shadowing here and there through that course. And being a part of these tours really opened my eyes to the experiences that our students could really have in terms of that hands-on, really, teaching and learning experience and collaboration with the hands-on skills. So knowing that we've had these conversations for a long time, I think the thought has been, when is the opportunity? Certainly, putting all of these programs under one portfolio, under one building, trying to figure out a curriculum and schedule and all sorts of this thing, or all sorts of these things that we're concerned about have been, you know, in the back of Mr. Ripley's mind for a while. But there probably hasn't been the best opportunity to really create this collaborative experience. And so I appreciate the work of the EDC to go ahead and identify from a workforce standpoint, what are we looking at? Not to say we're going to run through this CTE center, but really as the EDC for our community to give us data that supports a solid career-ready workforce right out of high school that would employ our own citizens from our community who want to stay and don't want to go to other regions of the state or out of the state. Some of the experiences that we were able to learn about at these other career centers talked about the student experience, and they talked about students from all walks of life. The student who, for lack of better terms, was failing all of their other classes, but when it came time to enroll in their CTE schedule or their passion area, they thrived. And so a lot of the teachers and staff at the CTE centers talked heavily about the teaching and learning component and how, you know, sort of the core curriculum teachers worked with the CTE teachers. And really, in some cases, it was about making a positive impact on the student's mental health. They felt like there was an opportunity available for them to really utilize their passion. But also, they got creative with it. So some of the students were able to go to their scheduled classes, go to their CTE scheduled classes, and then maybe on a Friday, they could choose something else that they wanted to do or have a choice day, whether that be they needed to take their grandma to doctor's appointments because they had a choice day, or they were interested in another career opportunity to explore that. So I think the collaborative opportunity that we are giving to our students is choice-ready education, but skill-ready laborers is a great collaborative partnership. I also look at the airbase connection. Being a base kid, I think, you know, it was important to me to think about, how are we really creating that gap between city and the base? And when we went to Oklahoma, they had a airbase near there. Sioux Falls has some military connections. And so that was interesting to really get a good feel of cities that were connected or alike to what Grand Forks setup is. Lastly, I look at, you know, the poverty level in our city. And, you know, we have a lot of resources available for individuals, but it seems to be that sometimes there's a lack of childcare or affordable childcare. Sometimes we talk about unaffordable housing. We talk about maybe jobs that aren't open or that are open and there's not skilled labors for. And so the opportunity for me to really think about, how do we create opportunities for the citizens and taxpayers and people that live and breathe in our community and want to stay here, to be able to have really good paying job opportunities to then give back to our communities. We're increasing our tax base. We're increasing the amount of students that come into our school system. And really, this is one of the opportunities I can think of that's most recent, where we have business, city, county, school district, and the support from private industry partners all at the table. And I'm really excited that an opportunity like this has presented itself. From a board member's perspective, I did share in some of these conversations that, you know, we have a lot going on. The school district and the school board have been having some very heavy conversations coming out of COVID. We're still in it. We've, you know, went through a referendum process and are moving forward with a mill levy ask. And so we have a lot of things that are on our plate and at our table as we also move forward to welcoming students back in for another school year. And so I recognize that sometimes new opportunities feel like another thing that's added to the plate. But as the information was shared, there are some things that fell into place because of COVID, I guess, in a lot of ways where there's an opportunity now to think about the conversations we've been having and how we can put those into action. So that's my perspective. I'd also be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Amber. Remember, it's never too late to go into the nursing profession. We need nurses. Let's open it up to board member questions, comments, administrative cabinet questions, comments. Thanks, Jeff. Go ahead, Cynthia.
Maybe I'll go first because I have detailed, just nitty, nitpicky questions first. So not broad, but just nitpicky. On page 39 of the packet, the 825 total responses, eighth grade is included there, but it's just noted that Red River and Central. So eighth grade would be out of the middle school? So I didn't know if you polled all middle school students or... Sorry to put you on the spot on that.
Please come to the mic. Maybe their upcoming senior or freshman.
That's exactly right. So this, your exact comment is exactly right. So we were looking at, this survey was done real late in the spring, so late May. So the idea would be is they would be next year's ninth graders and also outgoing seniors. And so it really would be the incoming class and the outgoing class that's Red River and Central, if that helps.
Yeah, I figured that, but I thought I would ask. And then the other question is, and this isn't really a, this is probably more of a comment, but I've been really fortunate to have young professionals working with my organization, Global Friends Coalition. This isn't a school board necessarily question. And one of the things that I hear from interns and young professionals is that they go into careers for self-satisf, to make a difference. And that isn't one of the options when you are considering a future job or career path. What factors are most important for your decision on page 47 of that? So I wondered if you did that intentionally, because that is what I often hear right now, especially getting interns from UND. They often want to be in their, like, a passion field and making a difference in their life. So maybe it shifted this past year, but the amount of money I could make has always been less important. So maybe something happened in 2020. We could ask our two high school students that are on the board how they feel about that as well. So go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Shab. Thank you, Ms. Shab. I'll start over. So Praxis Strategy Group, which is a national data firm, helped put together these surveys. And so it's not an option in the survey, but perhaps that's a good thing that we could add when we readminister these to rural school districts in the fall. Thank you.
That has been a shift? That money is more important now? Because that isn't what I've been hearing with many.
So in initial reports at the national level, the difference between millennials and Generation C, money does play more of a factor in the roles that they're considering in careers, yes?
Let's hang on just one second. Alicia and Evan, not to put you on the spot, but she put you on the spot. Do you have any comments that you want to make about that?
I do enjoy spending money, so...
[laughing]
That would be, I guess, the best way to put it, I suppose, in this situation. So yeah, I do think money's definitely important with kids our age.
I also agree with Evan. Our, I feel like, our generation...
Five minutes and we are up and running, so I think we'll go ahead and resume the meeting. Mr. Douthat, I think you had a question or a comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two thoughts. The first one is, it's almost August. October 1 in our world is just right around the corner. So I would imagine that there's been, as you shared, some of the pieces, there's been some aligning of people to bring the support to reach the 10 million, which is some in-kind. So if I could ask, do you have an idea of where we are right now? And then secondly, I think sustainability, for example. When students come in, I don't want to get into the weeds too much here yet. When students come in, there's going to be materials, expendable materials, replacement materials, ongoing expenses that, will the private industries, will part of their in-kind donation be the supply to meet the demand of the education? So somewhat of a broad question yet, trying to just understand the sustainability of this as well as where we're standing right now with the community and private industry.
Thanks, Mr. Dewitt. Happy to respond to that question. You know, and I don't remember it all, so I'm just going to start to ramble, which is really what I do best. You know, we put together, and Beck outlined, the steering committee and the five different working groups that have been put together to take a look at whether this is something that we can achieve as a community and as a region. So we strongly believe that industry is going to have to come to the table in a big way. If that doesn't happen, this isn't going to happen. So I'm not sure what that number is. I will share with you, and it got some sort of play on the radio waves today, that the city of Grand Forks, through their growth fund and jobs development authority, had a conversation today about potentially purchasing what they're calling the former Grand Forks Inn and Suites. I know it is a former holiday inn, been in town long enough. And obviously, we understand the condition of that facility and that maybe the community would be better if it just went away. would be better if it just went away, buying it, raising that facility and contributing that site, if that is ultimately, if we can move forward with the initiative and if that is a chosen site. What is even more encouraging, there were members of that committee that said regardless of whether this is the site, we should dedicate at least a million dollars to this project because that's, it's that important for the community. So no decision was made, I have to be clear about that. But I think it's fair to say that there's strong interest, uh, from many players, industry that we've had around the table, as well as the City of Grand Forks and others, to invest in this as an opportunity for the future. And in terms of sustainability, there's a governance and budget committee that's a working group that's been put together, um, ultimately to make recommendations. One thing that I think you know, but in case you don't, that the applicant for a C T E center must be a school district or a consortium of a school district. So ultimately, moving forward on this in terms of submitting an application to leverage whatever we're able to raise locally from the state will be a decision in part or in totality of this board, quite frankly. So, you know, we're working in partnership with many different people, but ultimately, this is coming back to this group.
Thank you, Mr. Lund. And if I may, I have two neighbors. One is a service manager with a local plumbing company, and the other owns a business in town. And both of them, in our, in our street conversations, have both said they are continually, continually looking for employees to hire. So bringing something of this nature with real jobs and saying to people, every job is critical, there is no job that is not important, is absolutely wonderful, and putting something forward that will have purpose and will prepare them for what's next, I think is awesome. So thank you for your efforts.
Other board member questions or comments? Shannon?
I think this is a, it's a great opportunity. Um, and I don't expect the answers to this, because what I gather is we don't have many answers at this point in time. But a couple of things that I think as a board member for me to get behind a vote to move this forward, um, to Chris's detailed question, sustainability has been nothing of a secret with this, these dollars. Um, they expect the school districts will carry this at some point in time in the near future. This is just seed money. Um, so that's of concern to me, especially as we're coming out of talking about the fact that we don't have sustainable dollars to maintain our current infrastructure. Um, the thought of building a new building for this, there needs to be some, some commitment of sustainability on the tail end of that. Um, I'll add to that, we have lots of big box stores that are currently sitting empty. I don't know if there's plans for those, but, um, the North Dakota School College down in Fargo, that was Wappatin original, and then that's their satellite campus, has done very well out of an old Kmart building, as I understand it, and that facility is beautiful. I've been in it multiple times for safety and security, media, like, um, training sessions for U N D. So I think of that potential when we have those vacancies, you know, the mall area, for example. Again, not, not saying that that's the site, but I would hope we would be considering utilizing what we currently have as assets within our community portfolio i- in that discussion. Um, I'm curious about, I mean, there's a lot of industry up there, but when you try to accomplish everything, what are you going to do really well? Because we have Northland Tech. We have, you know, N D S C S down in Fargo and Wappatin. We have all these other, you know, within close proximity. I mean, they're an hour away or even closer. So when I hear we're talking to Northland Tech, that, that's great, because I think feeder immediately is, is where you can partner with somebody like that. And I know, you know, I've realized money doesn't go across the state line, or state dollars don't really cross borders between states for some reason. There's this barrier that you can't get through, but there's still that opportunity for collaboration. So I do hope that we're talking, and I'll be interested to hear how they're being drawn into the conversation. Um, I do want to know what are the specific industry positions that we want to focus on at least and highlight and have as kind of those cornerstone? Because I can think of a number of manufacturing sector jobs. One of the concerns I have, and you hit it on the head, Becca, is we're not, this is not a Grand Forks problem, this is not a State of North, this is a national problem. Um, and it's, it's the jobs that are low wage, entry-level positions that everybody is looking for and trying to get bodies for. And unfortunately, what it comes down to is the wages are not high enough to entice people to stay in those jobs, especially at this current point in time where we are with the national sort of temperament of coming out of a pandemic, safety, security, and then cost of living being through the roof. Um, I'll tell you, when I came here to Grand Forks, the wage I was offered for the same position in a very nearby community was twenty percent less here, for some reason. I don't know what that is. That was close to ten years ago. But when I see a couple of data points from that survey, one, the generation is focused on money and income. And the reason of it is, is when you have a generation, which I say, I think Amber and Jackie can speak to this, I can speak to it. I've gone through two financial criseses in my lifetime, and I was fortunate enough to have parents who taught me not to go to a school and incur debt that I wasn't certain I was going to be able to pay back. Um, but a lot of other people in my generation didn't have that education in their home, and they were strapped with six figures of debt and then went through two financial criseses, can't afford, you know, that's the lifestyle that they live, and they've taught that now to their kids, that, that money is important and having a job that you can sustain. And, and one won't be the first job cut in a financial crisis, which unfortunately goes back to why those jobs are so hard to fill, because those are oftentimes the ones that get cut first. So those are really important things. And I think when you see a factor like wage is really important, and then you see, you know, a factor that, you know, yeah, there's, there's a, there is a lot of neutrality on whether financially businesses want to, you know, financially sustain something like this. And then also, you see an indicator from industry saying, well, we don't have enough to even pay a competitive wage. You kind of have that perfect storm of like, where do you put the dollars? Or where, where is industry going to put the dollars? And so I, I do think that's going to be an important factor, especially from sitting around the board table for me, that we are going to be expected as a district to carry this load at some point and continue to be able to financially support whatever it is that we're developing here. And I think this is a great opportunity, and it is a feeder. Um, but those financial and those fiscal kind of commitments have to be somewhat solidly answered, or at least tentatively, there's got to be a commitment there in, in like a ten to twenty-year strategy for how we're going to snowball this into something more, or, you know, within five years, how are we going to pivot? And not, you know, lose the investment and the opportunity that we've got. So those are just some of the things I'm thinking about, and I know that's a lot. There's a lot of questions to unpack there. Um, but I do think there is a lot of opportunity. I know there's a lot of, um, you know, my, my husband's a general contractor, and getting qualified labor and just having that skill is something that he looks for and who he hires. And so I could see that as something within our community and what our industries really are staple industries, L P Ns. You know, I, I can think of a lot of those business type of entry levels, that this would be uniquely an opportunity for not only K-12, but for young adults, um, who maybe don't know what they want to do, but they want to at least earn a wage and figure out maybe what they want to do. So this is exciting, um, and I, I don't want to be a wet blanket. I just, these are the things that I'm unpacking and kind of thinking about as, as I read this and as I heard the presentation.
If I might just make a couple of comments. Um, in terms of sustainability, absolutely. I mean, the grant application is certainly going to want any applicant to address how that will be sustained. So that's, uh, you know, the governance and budget committee will have to take a look at that. And there are some opportunities, I think, but it's not my place to say in terms of that, that ultimately being this applicant is a school district or a consortium of a school district, that needs to come back to you from that committee. In terms of curriculum, the grant application requires that, uh, that applicant identify the specific curriculum that's going to be delivered and how that's going to be delivered, and the logistics of getting students back and forth. So there's some, there's a lot of work to do. Uh, in terms, I'm jumping back a little bit. We're trying, and we're going to have every intention to apply October one, but I think it's the commitment of the group to not move so fast that we put in incomplete or not compelling applications. So if we're not there, we're not going to put something forward that is not going to, we think, be, be well received. So it could be October one, or it could be December one. I, I think we all agree that we'll go as hard, as fast, as diligently as we can, but we'll see how that works out. Uh, in terms of location, I'm not on the facilities committee, at least I don't think so. Maybe I'll get an email that says I am, that's happened before. But I do know, uh, that they're going to look at many different locations in terms of West Best. I know, uh, leadership from the school has taken a look at at least one, if not two, existing facilities. Uh, the site that I talked about in terms of the city, considering it's certainly not the only, I guess we couldn't call it a greenfield, but would be, uh, you know, there would be other sites that could be built upon as well. So ultimately, I think it will be the recommendation of that group as a part of that grant application to come back here, um, considering a number of factors. And cost would be one of them, how efficiently, if it's an existing retrofit, how those classes could be delivered, that curriculum and the flow of that facility. So I guess I'm just saying that there's a lot of detail to work out. You indicated it yourself, and we intend to bring all of those back and to have it compelling and for your consideration, hopefully very, very soon.
Other questions or comments? Jackie, go ahead first, and then Amber.
Um, so I have some of the same concerns, obviously, that were raised already in terms of sustainability. And, um, you know, as a board member, um, we have so many moving pieces all the time, and, and sometimes it's hard to weigh future investment versus current status, saving money today, investing in tomorrow. All those pieces are really complicated for us sometimes. So I'm just wanted to make a recommendation, and this is maybe more for administration, but, um, if we could, if the deadlines allow and information allows, have information maybe presented to us so we can discuss it, digest it, and then vote later, as opposed to having maybe a four-day turnaround on information. I think that would be really beneficial, um, just because I feel like this is going to be one of those things that's going to weigh a little bit. And I would like to be able to elicit community feedback and those sorts of pieces as well.
Thank you. Amber?
I just wanted to comment on a couple of things. I think, um, some of your questions, Shannon, are spot on in terms of just a futuristic, like, what's the vision for this? Um, it's my understanding, Mr. Lund, that, um, at some point, an R F P will go out for like architectural services or potential renderings. And that would then entail, what do, what do the spaces or the design look like, which may then turn around, what might a cost be? So you'd be able to determine, um, uh, if we're at that, you know, sort of match, one for one, and that twenty million dollar, doesn't mean that you can't get more from industry dollars or from private donors to go above and beyond. But certainly, if the cost, you know, way exceeded something or what our match was, you know, it, it may not be a possibility, or it may, may, uh, create a extended timeline or something like that, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
Ms. Lund, I'm not sure, yes. I guess I'll say, um, not going to be put, I, I don't think anyone in the steering committee or anyone involved in the process wants to put forward a incomplete application or something that isn't compelling or something that isn't sustainable, because nobody really wins in that scenario. So I think this is a real opportunity, though. Uh, Becca mentioned it's once in a, I don't know, a lifetime, that might be a little bit extreme, but certainly doesn't come around, and this opportunity doesn't come around very often. She indicated these are CARES infrastructure dollars that are coming to the state, and they took a portion of that and dedicated this. So in terms of this type of funding, haven't seen it for fifty years, as Mr. Ripley indicated. Um, you know, from our standpoint, um, and I think Becca indicated, in terms of taxpayers and the community, business expansion, all of that, there's fifteen hundred jobs or sixteen hundred jobs and a hundred companies that responded to that survey. Just imagine if those could be filled. And it's not, this isn't a magic wand, and we're not going to do that year one. But if we can retain incrementally more and more people through, because we're connecting students that are in the pipeline today, and giving them very clear pathways, which isn't a word that we talked about a lot in our presentation, and I think that's on us, because a big part of this effort is to identify pathways, whether you're looking at a career right out of high school, whether you're looking at associates or some type of certificate degree or four-year degree. I wrote a term here. Um, I mean, this is about exploration and acceleration to your chosen career. And this is Becca's to say, and I'm going to apologize to her, but this is really about being career-ready and college-prepared, and I think doing the best benefit for the students that are in the district. All of those things that are said are absolutely on point, and we have to address them and address them well before we can move it forward. But I really think this is an opportunity that we should make every effort to leverage.
So go ahead, Cynthia.
And I agree, I agree totally, one hundred percent. I think one of the questions that people might ask is why not put the money in the career and technical education program that the Grand Forks Public Schools is currently offering? Because we've gone to the voters, we got a vote no on a ten mil, and we've got a no on a new school. And so this, I don't, I don't know if the grant would even allow that. Um, what, what I mean by that, if that isn't a clear question, is why not increase the capacity in, say, Red River High School, Central High School, for career and technical education, rather than thinking about a new building?
I get, you know, an existing facility or a facility owned by the district, I don't think is, is, I think that's allowed. Um, I think ultimately, the facilities committee would take a look at the programming that aligns with industry and student, industry demand, demand or need and industry and student interest, and the quality of those facilities. One of the, I mean, you, you saw some of the pictures in the presentation, and those are tremendous. And I hope, quite frankly, I hope we can get there. I mean, to have someone sitting at a table, learn something, go over to a medical lab just next door to practice that, and then if they don't have it right, go back to the book and go back and forth until they get it right. I mean, and the industry engagement that's possible at a facility like this and through program like this, I think is tremendous. Um, we've heard from, uh, the centers that we toured, and even from the Cass County Center that they broke ground on, I think it was two weeks ago, they're already marketing this, the industry that's looking at their community from an attraction standpoint to grow that industrial base and that tax base. So I kind of went beyond the scope of your question, I think, a little bit, but I'm in sales mode right now.
Mr. Ripley, from an educational standpoint, would you want to comment about Cynthia's question?
Sure, and I, I think it's, it's a valid question. Um, certainly, space is, is a challenge. Um, and so one of the options, as we talk about location, um, there are really three in, in my viewpoint. One would be is to build new, right? Um, one would be is to retrofit an existing space. And then the third option would be is to build onto a school. And the school that would allow you the space to build onto would be Red River High School, just because of the green space on there. Uh, if you go back to the J L G report from five, six years ago, that was one of the recommendations in the J L G report. So again, I go back to the facilities committee, looking at those options and saying that could certainly be a case. Uh, but it's not as simple as, you know, taking four small walls and you got to make it bigger, right? In order to be able to have the lab spaces in there. I look at our automotive lab at Red River High School, we have four automotive bays in that automotive space. We're, we're at the Moore Norman facility, I think they had twenty-some. And I mean, it's just, space needs bigger spaces, higher ceilings, bigger labs, is really what we are missing, and it takes square footage. And so whether that's built onto a school or built, uh, onto a new site or retrofitted an existing facility in town, it's got to be, it's got to be one of those options. But at the end of the day, we just don't have enough square footage for our programs.
Thank you. Amber?
I can provide a teaching and learning example for that as well. Um, one of the conversations that we had with, um, the individual...
Erica, I'm glad you brought up that five, six years ago with J L G, because I remember those discussions and, and that was something that was, was important then, it's important today. I think today, though, sustainability for this district, uh, is going to be a major, major question. And so I, I also want to piggyback off what, what Jackie said. I think this will take two meetings, whenever we see an application, uh, for discussion and then for approval. And if this is going to be October first...
Your first date is September thirteenth, so your timeframe is pretty short. Uh, I, I think you got an awful lot of work ahead of you, and with community conversation and community, especially with, with the, the feeling of the district with the need for community input and, and discussion about what we might want to be doing, because this may, if we ultimately do something, maybe a reallocation of existing resources and that we need the community conversation. And so the sooner the better, and that, I, I personally think you're probably pushing that October first date. But to me, December first feels much more comfortable, and if, if there's thirty-five million available in each one, you know, I, those that may be more ready today in other cities, yeah, they may get a jump on us, but it's only two months. So I don't know that it's, but unless everybody's going to wait... going to wait for December 1st, and it gets really competitive. So I, that's really my comment. I, I do have a little, you know, back to that jail, I mean, different locations, I don't think is all bad, depending on what the curriculum is going to be. If, if it all fits together, great, one site. If it's quite different, two, three really different things or whatever, different locations, to me, works just as well, so.
Thanks, Dr. Shannon.
Yeah, I want to just jump on to something Amber said, you know, in particular, not only with some of the tech schools already existing in the area, or the two-year accreditation programs that already exist in the area, but I know one of the things that I talked about quite a bit with the provost that I worked for at UND was, you know, the extreme interest in how do we get UND presence, you know, in K-12? And how do we recruit and competitively recruit students to stay here in Grand Forks for their university education? And this is one of those things that, you know, so long as that sentiment hasn't changed vastly since I've been there, I think you have a lot of opportunity and some really fantastic faculty over on campus who, you know, could be utilized in some of these CTE or more technical that we don't currently have, you know, staff to, to sustain, and there might be that partnership that does help with sustaining some of those, you know, budgetary salary line items where we don't need to, to hold that up, but the university comes in and contributes and matches and, and makes that commitment to provide, you know, faculty hours towards it. So there's a lot of potential, and I mean, it, it is exciting, because you do have a lot of different industry already situated in Grand Forks, and it's just kind of marshaling those resources in kind of an in-kind. And I know there's, I mean, no shortage of people who are in professional career fields who love to talk about themselves and love to talk about all the great things they do, and you put those people to educating, you know, students who are going to be, you know, they're getting probably credits on top of it towards graduation, and, I mean, it's, it's magic what can happen in those situations. But yeah, you know, kind of what Doug was talking about is, you know, look at the alignment. We have great medical facilities and a brand-new medical school on UND, it's still brand-new in my mind. I mean, it's not that old, but you have the, that lab space there and that learning lab, so maybe you do try to position something up off of gateway that's close by for some of the other sort of feeder. You know, UND Med School would be an easy partner, and there's a lot of other opportunities there. So I, it, I mean, it's really exciting, and so I want to end on that note, that I think it's exciting. I do agree with Doug. I think it's ambitious by October 1 to have, like, your matched donors lined up, unless you guys have already been priming them for months to get those commitments, so I'll be excited to see that. One of the things that I didn't see in the slide deck, I saw the steering committees, but what I didn't note was, and maybe I just overlooked it, I thought I would have seen, like, Amber's name, or Dr. Lund, or Doug, because I think we should put him on every committee, because he's got time on his hands. And, I mean, but, but having a board member, I mean, ultimately, if we're going to be responsible for voting to move this application forward, bringing in at least a board member, I know we have our superintendent in our administration, but at the end of the day, we're the ones who have to give that sign-off to give them cover, and it'd just be good to have a board member tracking and kind of reminding everybody, like, hey, we got to answer to the community at large here, and so make this easy on us. So I, that was just one of the things I wrote down that I forgot to ask earlier, was, you know, whether there was a plan to have, like, at least one or two board members kind of pace.
I'll get used to this eventually. That's a really great point, and something that we didn't mention is we've done the feasibility analysis up to this point, gotten the partners in planning grant, and really, those steering, those task forces are now being charged to have their first meetings this weekend going forward. We certainly would invite any member of the school board who would like to be an active participant in those steering committees or task forces to, please let us know. We'd be happy to have your expertise in the room, your input is valued, so thank you for that.
I'll modify that a little bit. Please let Dr. Brenner and I know, because if we have five of our board members attending those meetings, we've got a quorum and we have a problem. So, so run it, run it through us, and we'd be glad to, to help out. And I am, and I'm glad to see that UND is at the table with that. I think that's going to be helpful. Before we wrap it up, Jeff, do you have any, any thoughts, comments, questions? I haven't heard from you.
Well, it's been said before that the good thing about being lashed is all the topics have already been covered, so.
That was a very good person that said that, I think, so.
Exactly. So my concerns, too, are the, the, the partners that we'll partner with to try to get some contributions for that money, and then the sustainability as well, that everybody's mentioned before, so that's just my concerns.
Alicia or Evan, do you have any further comments that you'd like to make? Okay. I just have one quick one, and that's an unfair one. I realize long-term sustainability is going to be important for this school district. What, what is the group looking at from, from, what do they, what do they want from the school district on a short-term standpoint? I mean, you know, I, I haven't seen a lot of that, I'm just curious as to, in the short-term, are we in charge of all the curriculum, or what, what, what would be the expectations of the school district, not in the long-term, but in the short-term?
Yeah, maybe I'll start and then turn it over to the very talented Mr. Ripley. So right now, Grand Forks Public Schools, you're not new to the CTE game, you're already allocating dollars to support CTE programming, including 58 courses and 48 instructors. So this is not finances that are just going, we're going to be asking from, from out of nowhere. Staff time would need to be contributed to that. And additionally, as mentioned before, we are looking at other sustainability pieces, partners like Laker Region State College, who has four different programs in four different buildings throughout Grand Forks region, that they would be looking to consolidate and have actively said they're looking to consolidate under one building. And grant funding as well from programs like the Bush Foundation, who is supporting the Fargo Cass Clay through a program that helps new American learners and English language learners. So those are all things that we are considering. Again, we're very early on in this process. Our whole point was that we didn't want to have a fully baked pie by the time we came here. We really want to involve you in every step of the process and invite you in. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Ripley.
Sure, and I, I think it's a fair question, and again, I'm, I'm going to reference the Grand Forks Area Career Technology Center, which is our virtual center that's delivering currently distance-learning K-12 CT courses to, to our surrounding communities. As part of the governance model for that application of the state, this board is actually officially the governance board of that center, even though there's eight school districts involved, this board is the governance of that. The Grand Forks Public School serves as the fiscal agent. So when Keith references that an application needs to come from a school district or a consortium of school districts, you know, it, it would seem feasible that we would follow the same pathway as the virtual area center, which is, this could be an option for governance, not the only option. Could be a separate governance model that's selected, and again, that's one of the subcommittees that want to steal their work. So certainly, your awareness, your support for that would be, would be the first one. As Becca indicated, we have a very robust CT programming currently happening across the district, both with required courses, the middle-school level, elective coursework at the high school level. This project has to be something beyond just pulling programs from Red River and Central and putting them into a third location, okay? If, if that's what we're doing, then we're probably not in it for the right reasons. It's got to be something beyond that. How are we strengthening those existing programs? How are we expanding those programs? How are we bringing in the post-secondary and industry connections so that there is a continuous and seamless pipeline from a career exploration to workforce or, you know, post-secondary training education? But in doing that, we already are making a pretty sizable investment each year as a district into the staffing that we have of our current, current CTE programs. I think there's potentially some efficiencies that can be saved on that. We already have programs that are being shared between the two schools. Central students come to Red River for autos, Red River students go to Central for graphic arts. So we have some efficiencies already created, and I think that there's, there's an opportunity for that. And then the last piece would be for the consideration of, of, again, the board, you're going to, you're going to see a, an SRR3 package that's going to come forward. You know, one of the, one of the local match options would be is a commitment or contributions of the school board and district of SRR funds towards this, which does meet the criteria for the learning loss criteria, and SRR3 CT does meet that criteria. And so there, that's another option for consideration. And, and again, that's something that we're going to have to have further administrative conversations about, recommendations to, to the board, but that might be coming at some point, because I think that SRR3 package is due in, in August. And so that would be more Dr. Brenner's wheelhouse, certainly Dr. Lewis and Scott and Catherine, so.
Thank you. I like the analogy of the unbaked pie, but just remember, if you have 20 bakers in the room, sometimes it doesn't go as well either, so. So maybe partially baked, so. Thank, thank you. We, we look forward to, to having further discussions about this. Thank you for your time. Sorry about all the technical glitches with the brownouts. Appreciate it, but we look forward to hearing back from you soon, so thank you. Let's move on to item 5D, smart restart update. Dr. Brenner?
Thank you, Dr. Lund. Page 58 of your packet highlights memorandum around our smart restart, not to be confused with what the school year will look like when we bring all students back at the end of August, but really what our summer school programming will look like for students in kindergarten through grade eight. So I'm just going to highlight some pieces out of this memo for you. We've got kids in intro to kindergarten who'll be starting on August 2nd, along with our students in grades one through eight. And what we're saying at this time about our masking policy is that it will be optional for both staff and students. What we learned with our high school program that ran the month of June and one week in July, we had the, the same framework in place. Five students were tested for COVID and all came back negative, and so we're using that as basically our springboard for our, our summer school program in August. We haven't made any final determinations yet for the start of the school year. We're certainly aware of the, the variant, and I'll say that plural, of variants that are moving across the globe, across our country, and are present in North Dakota, whether some people agree with that or not, or believe in it or not. The fact is, science is telling us that it is. So our message to our summer school parents would be in the second paragraph, "At this time, masks are optional and not required in Grand Forks Public Schools." So key there is "at this time." We'd like to bring this back to you in August, again, before the start of the school year. We'll take another look at it and see how things are moving in our community. We're fully aware that the Dr. Lund's Association, the American Pediatrics Association, has a perspective on masking. CDC has a bit of a variation to that perspective. Epidemiologists across the country are split and divided on what, what the best path forward is with masks or without masks. We have governors in three states who have issued mandates or put law into place that school districts cannot enforce a mask mandate. And then we, we simply have to look at what's happening locally, and that's, that's what I glean from a lot of the research that I read, is you have to take a look at your local data and respond to it. Had a phone conversation with Grand Forks County Public Health Director Debbie Swanson, and she says the way we are, the terminology that we're using, that's underlined, "At this time, masks are optional, not required in Grand Forks Public Schools," is supported by public, public health. And what we're doing is we're giving parents the opportunity to make those decisions. You know, whether that plays well for all people, probably not. Probably not for the people in our, in our room tonight, who have certainly a position on that. But we have 7,400 students in our school district, we have 1,600 people on payroll, and we want to be as cautious as we can. And at the same time, I want to remind everybody who is watching, we are one of two states, North Dakota and South Dakota, who saw the school year through. Granted, we started about four days late, but we ended on time. All of our athletics and co-curricular activities, for the most part, started the season on time and played through state tournament time. Only two states can say that they did that, so I think we, we did well with the information that we have, and so just wanted to let you know that that's how we would be starting our summer school program on August 2nd. Certainly would welcome feedback from our board members.
Thank you, Dr. Brenner. Before we go to board members, I've got several people that wanted to make comments from the, the audience. Please limit your comments to three minutes or less. If, if you have commented to us before and haven't, don't have anything new to offer, please don't, don't repeat what you've said, and if other people have, a front of you have spoken the same thing, we don't need to hear it two or three or four times, once is enough. So the first one I have is Erin McSparron.
I'm Erin McSparron, and I wanted to thank you to the school board and Dr. Brenner for the time to speak to you tonight. I was happy to see that the school board agenda included the smart restart update and addressed masks and vaccinations. I was afraid that despite the outpouring of voices from your community, including numerous speakers from the last meeting, that you weren't going to address it during the broadcasted meeting. Per Dr. Brenner's memo, you mentioned that, quote, "We are modeling our efforts around the success we had with our high school summer school program," end quote. During those five weeks, masks were optional, and there were no cases of COVID. You also stated thankfully that, quote, "At this time, masks are optional and not required in Grand Forks Public Schools," end quote. While I'm happy that you've come to the right conclusion, I wonder what you are using to make the determination if masks will be ludicrously required. You mentioned that summer school will be your truest litmus test, but while you use this scientific analogy, I question what science is being applied. After all, there is nothing scientific about the requirements of the masking, distancing, and cancellations that we used last year. I do appreciate that you recognize that the CDC guidelines are only suggestions. It's nice to finally have it admitted that the lengths that were taken last year are not actual requirements. You made those decisions. After all, we didn't elect the CDC, we elected this board. And while our federal taxes pay the CDC for their opinions, I'm more interested in the results of the local taxes that are paying you. You are right when you say that mandating masks to those who are unvaccinated would have its challenges. I'm glad that you've been listening to the parents, saying that they will take their children out of school if you go back to that model. Losing students and the funding that comes with them would indeed be a challenge. As part of the same smart restart memo, you referenced the vaccination rates in Grand Forks County of 12- to 17-year-olds at 30.4% and 18- to 64-year-olds at 53.1%. I must question, why vaccinating these populations, who have little to no chance of dying from COVID, is the focus? Especially with something that does not prevent you from getting COVID, doesn't prevent you from giving it to someone else, and studies show may have as little as 39% effectiveness against the newest strain. You brought up the strain, so 39% effectiveness is what is being shown right now. CDC data showed that zero children have died from COVID in the US without pre-existing conditions, and even those deaths are one-third of those that die from pneumonia every year. Why would we bribe and coerce students to take a vaccine that grants them the risk of death and lifelong injury to maybe save them from what they experience as a cold? Why would we expect teachers to take it when there are treatment options that are much safer to utilize? There have been 491,218 injuries and deaths reported to the Vaccine Adverse Event Reporting System.
Please wrap it up. Thank you. Please wrap it up, if you could.
Yep. And many of those were healthy before they took on the risk, the risk with little benefit. Will the next step of the smart be reliant on students and teachers ignoring the obvious risks of the vaccine in order to have the freedom to restart? Will you tie mask-wearing, distancing, and the ability to do extracurricular activities to the vaccination rates? Are we going to make the same ill-informed decisions to shut down and quarantine dependent on cases? We have proof of the schools that employed no distancing and took the approach to stay home if you're sick and wash your hands if they're dirty, and they had a successful school year. Lockdowns, masks, and distancing didn't work the first time. They caused tremendous harm, and the last thing we should do is repeat our mistakes.
Please wrap it up.
Last. How about we use science, not litmus paper, models, or superstition? How about we use science, not litmus paper, models, or superstition? Let kids and teachers be kids and teachers. No lockdowns, no masking, no vaccine coercion, no matter what. Thank you.
Thank you. Anne Marie Studer.
Thank you, Board and Dr. Brenner, for the opportunity to speak. I have two school-aged children, a son who will be entering second grade at Phoenix Elementary, and my daughter will be starting kindergarten, and she will be starting the intro to kindergarten program on August 2nd. I would like to reference just a previous point made, that we chose to homeschool our children last year, for my first-grade son. Two main reasons: my husband's a nurse at the hospital, ended up working long stints in the COVID unit, and also we wanted to have predictability over how our year would be. We weren't sure with school closures and how things would play out. We are planning to return our children to the schools this year because of how successful the school was in implementing masking and distancing guidelines throughout last year. We heard from numerous family and friends how impressed they were with how the district handled it and felt that their children were not in any way affected negatively by this. So I would like to point that out. I would like to appeal to the district to continue following the guidelines on best practices for keeping our children, schools, and communities safe. And you've mentioned this already, the most recent guidelines show that children should be masked in indoor settings in addition to good handwashing practices and social distancing measures, particularly given the amount of time our children spend indoors in Grand Forks. And as we enter the fall and the winter months, I think that is particularly important to bear in mind. The Delta strain has been proven to be highly contagious. I'm from Ireland. I am hearing from my family and friends back at home of people who are becoming sick. I believe this is a fact. And in Grand Forks, we can see that the Department of Public Health has confirmed that of those eligible for vaccination, only 52% are currently vaccinated. And that concerns me as a parent, knowing that my children are likely to enter a classroom, mixing with other students whose families and friends are not vaccinated. Children under the age of 12 also do not have the option to be vaccinated at this time, and so I would like that to be taken into consideration. Children, the data that shows that children have been hospitalized and becoming sick because of COVID-19, yes, shows that the numbers are low, but children do not exist in a vacuum. They go home to their families, to their friends. They socialize. Activities compared to last year are back in full swing, and I think that's also important to take in consideration. These children are mixing together. They are going out into the community. No one is stopping them from playing. No one is stopping them from having a childhood. Masks are just an extra layer that can help protect our communities. Although inconvenient, I believe that masking, particularly at the elementary school level, would allow the district to use one of the most simple and effective means of protecting the majority of our children as well as our community. It worked for our schools and community last year. Why not this year? My family and I trust that the district will continue to make science and data-driven decisions that allow for the continued protection and safety of our children and our community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul, and I don't know if he's still here. I can't read his last name, Granulaca or something. Is he still here? Nope. Okay. David Waterman.
Thank you again. This is a vexing problem because, as Dr. Brenner, you pointed out, there are various groups that take opposing positions on the issue of children and masks. The problem is that science is not opinion, and reality is what it is. The reality is that for seven months, according to the CDC, and I have their information in front of me, from February 2nd through August 22nd, in the age group five to 14 years old, that's a population of 41 million plus, they recorded 28 deaths involving COVID-19, meaning, involving meaning that the children who died had some type of symptom that was similar to symptoms of COVID-19. Doesn't mean that they had COVID-19. If they had a cough, if they had shortness of breath, if they had a fever, that qualified them as having possible COVID-19. So they included those in those deaths. 28 deaths out of 41 million children. The total number of children that died during that period of time was 2,935, 28 with possible COVID symptoms out of 2,935 deaths out of a population of 41 million. The best science, the best research shows that children don't get COVID-19, and they don't spread COVID-19. You can point to isolated examples. You can say, well, this child got very sick, and those are isolated examples, but we never -- that's, those are the exceptions. But it's never been a good idea to make policy based on the exception. Policy should be made based on the rule and what's normal. A recent study that came out of Germany that tested children's ability to tolerate carbon dioxide showed that 2,000 parts per million was the highest level that children should be exposed to. They then tested to see what the carbon dioxide rate going to a child's lungs would be after three minutes of wearing a mask, and it was 13,000 parts per million within three minutes. 13,000 compared to 2,000. In other words, after just three minutes, children are breathing in six times the rate of carbon dioxide that's considered safe to them. Their lungs are smaller, their brains are developing. We can't afford to have that kind of damage imposed on these children. And that's not a rare thing. That's for all the children that do it. Masks are not tested for efficacy against COVID-19. They're not rated for COVID-19. They're not fit tested to the children. They're random pieces of cloth. There is no health assessment done on each child before they're told to wear a mask. The whole thing is really medically preposterous, and the number of people that are recommending it really stuns me. But the damage to the children, both psychologically and physically and emotionally, has been well documented. And I ask that you would strongly consider that for their sakes. If they had been forced to wear handcuffs coming to school as protection against COVID-19, I propose that the results would have been exactly the same as they were wearing masks. We would have been successful at keeping those children from getting COVID-19 because they generally just don't. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's open it up to the board members for questions, comments. Jackie.
I guess I wanted to start with just some of the pieces that have been said. And I don't know how we know if only five students have been tested over the summer because people get tested all over the place. And so I would imagine a great number of students probably have been tested, but I also would imagine that testing is down because there's some relaxation happening regarding COVID because our community numbers are down. Of course, that's pre-variant. And, you know, I, as a board member, have a life outside of this, and I do work in COVID life and sometimes spend eight hours a day getting trainings and reading materials on COVID-19 and variants and immunizations and all these different pieces. And I would encourage board members to do the same. I would encourage you not to spend eight hours a day, but maybe, you know, look up a webinar here or there and educate yourself a little bit. It is very helpful. And, you know, I'm not a medical expert. I'm not a public health, I don't have a public health degree. I rely on experts and I rely on the science. But one of the things that I have learned from the experts is that we do have increased numbers in camps because of the Delta variant and daycares. It's simply untrue that kids do not get COVID. I contact trace on a number of cases every week where kids get COVID. And one of the things we do know is that this variant is going to increase its hospitalization rates by 88% are the estimates right now. And I would like us to be proactive instead of reactive. I don't want us to have to institute precautions because children die in our district. We can't avoid all outcomes, but we can certainly help. And I think one of the things that is important is mental health and education and all those pieces. And I think what we realized was that students suffered most when they weren't in the classroom, unfortunately. And so whatever we can do to keep them in the classroom, I think we need to do, and that means making sure our numbers stay down. The other thing I wanted just to briefly bring up is staff. With only 50% of our community being vaccinated, that means a number of our staff likely are not vaccinated. And I would imagine we're not going to be in the business of requiring vaccination by Grand Forks Public School employees. And so if we're not, I think that's something I would like to hear about as we move into the next school year, is what are going to be the requirements for staff versus students? Two fronts, right? I know that students, like, can often get things from adults, but also I want to protect our staff as well from, you know, passing things on to each other, too. So I hope that we are able to hear about that moving forward.
Anybody in a position to respond now, or is that for a future meeting about that? Okay, next meeting, next meeting. Shannon.
Yeah, so quickly, I just want to jump on Jackie's comment. So I have been back in my workplace since, it's going on almost a year. So we came back into the office probably before most other businesses, certainly before, I know, the university is just now starting a transition back. And our workplace has gone through, you know, rotating shifts in where we're trying to keep 60% capacity, to keep interactions down, limiting numbers of individuals within meeting rooms and conference rooms, every number of steps, and then vaccinations. You know, we certainly were fortunate because we work in the power industry, we're considered critical infrastructure, so we were in the first wave able to get the vaccine, which I was fortunate to be able to do. I come from a strong science background. Not everybody believes in kind of, you know, devoting their lives to the hard sciences, and that's their preference. And certainly there's individuals who we know, you know, there's cohorts of anti-vaxers generally across the board, and they may believe in any number of reasons why vaccines shouldn't be given to children or to adults, and, you know, prefer to pursue more health-based approaches to wellness and health, and that's their prerogative. But when it comes to public health at large, and I've had these conversations as a whole, our society, you know, bases policy and law based on morals and values, and there's a value of life in protecting the weak. This is why we have things like smoking bans and food health safety regulations. It's not necessarily up to the individual to get to make the decision when it can impact the public at large and those that don't have a choice to avoid, you know, the poor decisions of others. That's the way vaccines tend to work, is it's herd immunity. That's why we're getting to 60%. Fundamentally, I have a concern, as I think Jackie has raised, that, yes, students, I think minors, don't get free choice because parents are making the decisions for them, both medically and in other ways. So they may not have the choice to get the vaccine. That may be something their parents either won't sign off on or aren't comfortable with them, or they're concerned about any number of reasons. I understand, you know, optionality in masking to that degree. What I can't and won't support, and I'll say this, is that if we don't have a strong rule and stance in place over masking of our employees, if they're not vaccinated, that is a standard rule that has now gone into effect since vaccines are readily available, that those employees who choose not to be vaccinated need to wear a mask at all times. And I can tell you, that's in my workplace, and that's in numerous other workplaces where it was optional, but then at a certain threshold, it becomes you've made a choice, and now this is the choice you have to live with. So I would strongly encourage that the district consider that. With students, I think, you know, there's going to have to be a heightened awareness of potential bullying that happens, and that's going to have to be something that if we go forward with an optional masking, we saw how polarizing and political it was to wear a mask or not wear a mask. So I anticipate that being a huge problem if we make it, quote, "optional" and by choice. Bullying happens for any number of reasons, and this, add it to the list. So we'll have to be aware of that and give the support to the teachers in the classroom who are going to have to deal with that, in the same degree that they had to deal with enforcing masks. I have read a number of journal articles. I'm not an epidemiologist. I'm not a viral epidemiologist or anybody who, you know, understands the science. I've looked at mRNA vaccines. The risks to getting a vaccine of this nature far outweigh the consequence of getting COVID-19 and including the Delta variant. And to add to the list of things that Dr. Brenner mentioned, there may be governors that are prohibiting it, but there are now mayors putting mask mandates back into effect in cities that you would not imagine, and I think you're going to see that happen. And while we've been fortunate that this vaccine doesn't take the life of minors and children, that's not to say that this variant won't eventually have a mutation that then does impact kids. And at that point, we've seen it over and over again. The only weapons we have are vaccines and distancing, and we don't want to have kids out of the classroom because, as Jackie pointed out, that really impacts mental health. And there is a sincere concern from this local bar of what happens when we're not seeing kids who need to be seen in school because we're concerned about their health and well-being at home. You know, I can say I did my own informal asking of my six-year-old and said, you know, "Honey, what do you think if you go back to school if they have you wear a mask?" Because she hasn't had to wear one all summer in her summer programs. And her answer was, "We should all wear them. They keep me safe." Like, it was like, no big deal. So, you know, to a degree, yes, there might be outliers where there has been cause for extreme anxiety over what it means to wear a mask. I would wonder where that comes from and how that's been publicized and mediated and ramped up because wearing a mask, to me, does not seem like a very big deal. And the notion of carbon dioxide poisoning from wearing a mask, to the same degree, if you're going to say that you can't stop water particles from moving through a mask, it doesn't prevent a virus from getting to you, how does it trap CO2 molecules that are hundredths of a size smaller? And I can tell you that because I work in carbon dioxide. I understand how that works. That's actually the one area of science I'm knowledgeable about. I just think the notion of whatever we do next, I agree, it needs to follow science. It needs to follow data, and it needs to look at our local numbers, but I don't think it can ignore regionally what's happening, too, because we can see how this moves through a system, and it's the same way that it moved from Europe to the U.S., from the coasts to the middle of America. I mean, it moves. And as people are traveling more, as people are congregating more, you know, what they're saying in a lot of the cities that are seeing mass increase in the Delta variant is that nine out of 10 in most cases of those coming into hospital for severe medical care are those that are not vaccinated, that one additional person is usually somebody with a suppressed immune system, and that, yeah, they're now considering for those categories a booster in vaccine because of their suppressed immune systems and the immuno response. So, you know, we can't help, we can't force people to make a decision for the good of the whole, but I do think, you know, these layered approaches, as, you know, the American Association of Pediatrics has put out, they make good common sense. Like, there's no silver bullet to this, but there's a number of different approaches that can keep the community at whole safe, and we saw that last fall. I mean, we saw when the community put mask mandates into effect and really started strongly enforcing capacity limitations in places, that there was kind of a trending back of numbers. And whether that was just it worked its way through the community to enough folks that eventually there wasn't anybody else to get sick. But I just, I don't want to be totally reactive. I do want to be proactive, and I've trusted, and I've been very appreciative of the administration's leadership throughout this last year. And I think the measured approach that we're taking right now is good sense based upon where the numbers are. And I taking right now is good sense based upon where the numbers are. And I don't think we're going to rest on our laurels, but I do think we need to take a look at the difference between employees of the district, and what we can exemplify there, and how our students are treated as well.
Shannon, can I ask just a clarification?
Mm-hmm.
I thought I heard you say that the risks of vaccination is much worse than the risk of the disease. Is that what you said? Or were you, did you say opposite?
No. I said the opposite of that. I mean, I was asked about whether I would, you know, and this is personally. I mean, I have enough friends out there that are in medical professions and family friends that actually sit on the ethics committees and make recommendations to the CDC on the, you know, emergency orders, and the FDA on the emergency orders for drug administration. So I've had the opportunity to get some of that firsthand information and to ask some questions. From all I can tell, you know, percentage rates and what you're looking at, you know, the concerns over clotting, the concerns over arrhythmia and other functions that happen from the vaccine are at lesser rates than, for example, you know, other medications that are on the open market that are prescribed every day to people. And, yeah, it's a new technology being administered on a mass scale. But this is mRNA vaccines, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Lund, but they have been studied for the last 50 years, and developed over the last 50 years, and finally, funding was ramped into them because they showed this type of mass production promise. So when we talk about it being new, it's not new. It's just, it's gotten the flush of funding that it could actually be commercially developed and deployed. So that's a vaccine conversation, and that's not what I mean to say. You know, I think we're here talking about masks and vaccine mandates. I, like Jackie, don't see us getting in the business of forcing mandates, but mandates on vaccinations for our employees, because that's just not ground I think anybody wants to walk on. But I do think, you know, protecting to the extent that we can through what we did last year that was successful in the classroom, and I think we all saw our data that said, this really isn't being, it's not happening in our classrooms. Like, we're able to contain, we're able to reduce the spread within our classrooms. It's happening in the community. And I think we need to remember that as we're looking at the numbers going forward. And I trust that we will, because we successfully did that and navigated it last year. And to the same degree, we're hearing, you know, "I'm going to pull my kid from school if you require masks." I'm getting the same number of, "If you don't require masks, I'm going to pull my kid from school." So to me, it's a double-edged sword. Either way, we dice it. People are going to have to make decisions in what they truly believe is best for their children. And so I think we just, we need to stick to the science and the numbers, and keep as much kind of fringe opinion and fringe stuff out of it. Because I'm going to trust the people that have devoted their lives and their careers to these particular fields of science, that this is not a global hoax. This is real, and we've lived through it. And yes, it's a trauma globally, but we're finding ways to move through it, too. So that was a long rant, but I think it was needed to be said.
Thank you. Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First off, when I read the sentence in the second paragraph, "At this time, masks are optional, not required in Grand Forks Public Schools," I recognize, Dr. Brenner, that that sentence wasn't just written. You had input from multiple people, referenced through science and research and numbers within our community and our county. And so when a decision is made of this nature, since the beginning of COVID, I've put a lot of trust in your leadership with those you're surrounded with, at the senior administrative level, and the people that you communicate with. And I've never had any reason to disagree with what has been provided to the district. I would certainly respect people's freedoms, the faculties and staff. If someone has not been vaccinated, it would not be our responsibility to identify if they have or have not. Because as a board, we lead this district. If that is something we would require of them in the fall, then perhaps we should have been doing it prior. So if we expect something, it is our responsibility to set the standard to pave the way, to demonstrate. And again, I would never want to know whether one of you has or has not been vaccinated. It's not my business. If you were to ask me, I'd be more than willing to share. However, it's not my business to ask you what you have or have not had done. But I just wanted to respect the work that Dr. Brenner has done. And as we enter the fall, it's going to be very challenging. Yet, I believe, with the history that's been done since this first occurred in March, that whatever decisions are made, I truly believe that we, as a community, can respect that they were not made hastily, nor with any disregard, but with full understanding and respect, yet also acknowledging, as was stated, there's going to be some people that are going to be disappointed and/or upset. Yet, it is that type of a topic. Thank you.
Other comments? Go ahead, Jackie.
I just wanted to throw it out there that we will also be having UND students coming back in the fall. And if we can remember back from then, how that sort of helped peak some numbers in the community, which will affect our students, especially since those students at UND will be coming from different parts of the world who have higher numbers right now. But, oh, man, darn it. Now I forgot the other part of what I was going to say. I guess I'll just have to sit with it. Sorry.
I think we'll be talking about this at future meetings, so don't worry. Don't worry. Amber?
I'll try to re-brief. I think that this would be a good topic for future consideration as a possible standing meeting item as we continue moving through summer school and as we get closer. I certainly agree with inference that Chris made, is that more notice or whatever we decide as a board, as a district, is better than not. And so I appreciate that. I personally withdrew my child from school. Well, she wasn't homeschooled. I utilized the distance learning through the public school district, because we didn't know, and we had a young son. I was pregnant. And so at that time, you know, we made the decision that was best for us. I, too, like Shannon, have had other people on the other side saying, "If this is the decision to not require masks, I will withdraw and homeschool." So I certainly think that it's up to parents to make the decision that they see best for their students. What I do find is an interesting dichotomy is, for 16 months, we've asked kids to sacrifice their activities and their livelihoods, and, you know, wear a simple cloth covering on their face that some adults or parents might think is laughable. But now, we come to a place where adults are not doing their part in getting vaccinated, and really possibly ruining the experience for our kids moving forward. You know, I appreciate the opinions that are shared. I also appreciate the partnership that the district has engaged in with our local public health, our State Department of Public Health. I appreciate our governor of the state being an active billboard for vaccinations. You know, I think an opinion on the opposite end could say, as we are not scientists at the table, Dr. Lund certainly has an advanced degree than some of us in terms of medical speak. But I, just as any other human being, can look on the news or listen to NPR or anything like that and say, "Well, an opinion of mine is that a German study with CO2 was retracted." So, you know, certainly, we can have a debate at this table, we can have a debate in private, in public. But I think, at the end of the day, we have an obligation to put our students first. And whatever this board decides, whatever this district decides, is because we think that it is the best interest of all students, not a select few, not a select group who makes one decision or another. So I trust that this board, while we don't agree on everything, at the end of the day, we make decisions that are best for students. We'll do that together, and we'll do that in concert with the district administration and the appropriate officials.
Well, I look around this table, and you're all big boys and girls. And so this isn't going to be anything new. But when you look at medicine, there's black, there's white, and there's a whole heck of a lot of gray in the middle. And especially when you're dealing with something that's relatively new, and this is a relatively new disease/pandemic issue. So you can find data to support whatever claim you really want to make. And what's disappointing me the most is that we have lots of good experts, but they can't agree on things. And so now we've got experts who have differing opinions, I think, because it's not final science. And so unfortunately, we're all looking for those experts to say, "This is what you should do." And unfortunately, I don't think we're going to find that. I mean, you all know I'm a pediatrician, but before that, I was a microbiologist. Well, I spent my whole life dealing with microbes, including viruses. I don't have the answers. Fauci doesn't have the answers. None of them have all the answers. We do the best we can with the data we've had. The one thing that's disappointing me about the guidelines that have come out recently is they really don't regionalize it. I mean, you could have a rate of, you know, 50% of the people in some county in California are infected, and then you could have some county in Alaska that has zero. And we really don't differentiate from that, and I wish we would. I mean, we've done that with other diseases through the years, all the time. We don't worry about plague here, but they do in Colorado. So that's what's disappointing me the most about that. But we're not going to find definitive answers on this. We have to, as a group, make what we think are the best decisions. And we've all said along that we're going to listen to the experts, we're going to listen to public health, we're going to listen to the Department of Health, we're going to listen to the CDC. Unfortunately, now, they're not on, they're in the same chapter, probably, but they're not all on the same page. And I always defer to the experts, and I defer to the local experts before I'll defer to the national experts, because they know what's happening regionally. Right now, when you look at the active cases in Grand Forks, the last time I looked there, from, can't remember when it was, the last week, I think, there were seven new cases within a week. I mean, there's more total active case, but there were seven new ones. So we don't have a lot of COVID going around. But we do have a more contagious variants. It's not just Delta, it's the other ones. And so that changes. So I think the most important sentence in this statement, and I have to get my cheaters back on, but it says, is "at this time." We talked about how we had to be pliable and malleable last school year because we thought things were changing, remember in July and August when we were meeting on that stage at Red River? Well, I think that's not done either. I think we have to, we're going to have to be willing to pivot and shift if we need to. I'm comfortable with this, but I think in two weeks, we might not be comfortable with that. I do like to think we should be proactive, but sometimes in these situations, we're not going to be able to be proactive. We're going to have to slip into a reactive mode. So I'm disappointed we can't get better information. We've got a ton more information now than we had a year ago, but it's still not to the point where it's a done science, and, "Well, this is the standard way. You do this, and you do that." Unfortunately, we're not going to get there. And I agree with pretty much all of you, and especially with you, Amber, we have to think of what's best for the kids. And we have to think of both sides. It's kind of like when I talk to my patients about vaccinating their kids. I say, "You look at the risks, you look at the benefits, and you decide." You know, and you make a decision for your child, because they're your child. I tell them, "We're not in Russia. I can't force you to do that. You make that decision." And I think that's what we have to do, and we're going to have to continually do, probably at every meeting, until the pandemic either dies down or gets down to a level where we see with, like, annual flu, kind of thing. Any other final comments? Go ahead, Jackie.
Remembered. So I don't know if the administration's ready to answer this tonight or not, but are we going to have a distance option moving into the next school year, or is that going to be kind of phased out?
That's being phased out.
Jeff, haven't heard if you've got any thought? Okay? Doug? Okay. So I think you've gotten a lot of good input, and I think we'll be talking about this in two meetings in August, and maybe more in August. Thank you. Let's move on to superintendent's recommendations for action. Regular meeting schedule, these are on pages 59 through 61. Dr. Brenner?
Yeah, after our conversation at the last board meeting, we did a little more digging to substantiate what was said at the table, that the city council meetings are the first and third Monday, and that's typically when they get their citizen comments. So we decided we wanted to stay away from those meetings, and therefore went back to reestablish the second and fourth Mondays for school board meetings. We did listen to your input at our last meeting. We'll start, the meetings that we have tours, building tours, we'll start those tours at 5:30, and then we'll start our meetings here at MSSEC at 6:30. So basically, the dates are the same as last time. We've just adjusted the times.
Thoughts from board members? Go ahead, Shannon.
Thanks for the consideration in moving that to 5:30. That definitely makes it easier for me to get to most of those.
Other thoughts from board members?
I'd move approval.
We have a motion by Doug. Do we have a second? Second by Chris?
Second.
Okay. Any further comments or questions? Seeing none? Assuming a roll call vote. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Let's move on to item 6B, consent agenda. That's on pages 62 through 69. Do we have a motion and a second? Or a motion by Jeff? Do we have a second? Second by Cynthia? Assuming a roll call vote. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Item 6C, resolution regarding building fund levy, on pages 70 through 75. Mr. Bergy?
Thank you. Resolution attached in the board packet for submitting a question of increase in the school building levy to electors proposes increasing the school building fund levy from the current 10 mils to 20 mils pursuant to North Dakota Century Code, section 57-15-16. The following pages are similar, or in effect, exactly the same as, you know, the resolution that was approved for the vote that we had in June, of course, with this being the 10 mils only, not a referendum. I'll point out, on page 73 of the board packet is a sample ballot. You know, so we've got the sample ballot in there for increasing 10 mils, from 10 mils to 20 mils. Then, two pages down, on page 75, you know, is information related to the special election. You know, due to the timing of three months need to pass between a failed election and a subsequent election, the only date that fits prior to the October 1 deadline is Tuesday, September 28. So that's why we have September 28 as the date, is that is the only date that is at least three months beyond our June 22 date and prior to October 1. As you are notified as follows, information there refers to the Century Code and the increase from 10 mils to 20 mils. Below that, polling place within this document is the Alara Center. I have contacted the Alara Center. The ballroom that we had for the election in June is available on that date, if that's what the board would choose to do once again. Polling hours would be, you know, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, et cetera. Can answer any questions that you would have. The resolution, in effect, is the same as what we had for our previous election in regards to the 10 mils.
Questions or comments for Scott or any administrative team? Go ahead, Amber.
This is just more of a technicality, but it says, "Mark an X." If someone marked a checkmark or, like, an initial in that, would that vote still count?
If it's clearly identifiable, that you can understand the taxpayer or the voter's intent as to a yes or a no. For example, when we were looking at the vote count on June 22, there was one ballot that I had looked at where the mark or the X was actually between the yes and the no block. And so that was a ballot that we did not count, because it was, we could not, you know, identify the intent of that voter's, you know, response. But if it's an X or a checkmark, et cetera, if it's easily identifiable, it would work. But, you know, X is the, you know, really the preferred method for, you know, what we've seen with other ballot instructions, you know, with what other school districts have done on a manual vote.
Other questions? Cynthia? Cynthia.
Similar question, same page 73, on, in terms of the statements. So the instructions to voters, is that the language that's required? And I ask this because I've had several people tell me that they find that the language is confusing. For example, the foregoing proposition, I mean, you know, it's a big word, right? So I'm just, what I've said is, this language is required. Can it be simpler? Can it be that, you know, I mean, it would be really redundant, but voters desiring to vote in favor of increasing the school building fund levy should mark a cross opposite the words? You know what I mean?
I would have to look into that. All of the resolution, the sample ballot, et cetera, was prepared by our bond legal counsel that we've utilized for other votes. You know, language that I've seen, you know, mandate and use, et cetera, was, you know, very comparable to this. I would have to look if there are, you know, any specific requirements as to, you know, the language.
It's not just a one person, but several people have said that they, you know, the other thing is, it's a question, and it, there is no question mark. I had to throw that in as an English major, since I have that reputation, but, so I don't know what you can do, but I just think we need to make sure that people understand. I think this one is clearer than the last, than the referendum vote, but clarity is good.
Shannon.
And if it's not required, I mean, there has been a shift, I know when I was in law school, the shift was taking place where lawyers were trying to be, you know, worth our weight in fancy words that we threw around, and then there was a shift to, hey, keep it simple. And I went through two drafting courses where they were teaching lawyers to just write in plain English and not use these big words that nobody can, like notwithstanding and things like that, that are just not helpful to anybody, including me. I still have to look that one up, because it's, I don't know what it means half the time. So if you can, I mean, I would ask our bond counsel if it's not mandated, and maybe we can't do it at this point, because this is the meeting that we need to vote on, on the language to move it forward. But, yeah, it's, yeah, it's hard. I know foregoing is a hard one, you know, you could say following, and it means the same thing, and people can understand that a little bit better, but, yeah, it's probably at this juncture not a possibility to change the language.
Scott, is Shannon right that we have to approve this tonight to get it on the ballot for the 28th?
Yes, I believe you're correct, as we need to approve this a minimum of 60 days before the date of the vote, you know, so we don't have any other board meetings scheduled, you know, that would fit within that 60-day timeframe.
Maybe for the next time we have a vote in 20 years, we could look into it just to see if we can simplify the language for the next time we do this. Other comments or questions by board members?
I was going to say, I'm sure we'll shift back to using big fancy words in the next 20 years. That tends to be how we keep it fresh and keep business coming in as lawyers.
Move for approval?
Do we have a second by Doug? Further questions or comments for Scott or any of the administrative team? Seeing none? Motion is for approval, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Scott. Let's move on to item E, the general fund financial statement, on pages 92 through 101, the electronic packet. Scott?
Thank you. The financial statements in the packet are what I would label as preliminary, from the standpoint of, there's a variety of items that we don't have finalized, you know, as of June 30. There's some reporting that we have to submit that, you know, we don't know what, you know, for example, you know, career and technical education revenue, ID of B, you know, some of the tuition between districts, property tax revenue in lieu of taxes, et cetera, that aren't, we don't have final numbers on those yet. So what you see on these financials are preliminary. You know, actually, last year, we did not actually present the June financial statement until August due to not having, you know, all of the values finalized. So, again, what you have before you is a preliminary statement, an updated June financial statement will be provided at an August board meeting, when we've got, you know, the final details available. You know, what you see in front of you is, you know, revenues for the 12 months preliminarily of 108, almost 108 and a half million dollars, and expenditures of 114.8 million dollars, resulting in excess of expenses over revenues by 6,275,000. What I can tell you is, you know, the outstanding items are more on the revenue side versus expenditures. So I would anticipate there would be, you know, several hundred thousand dollars of additional revenue that we will post, that would likely get us to the point of where we'd budgeted for a 5.7 million dollar deficit. You know, of course, I can't guarantee anything, but based on looking at the past couple of years, when we do finalize revenue numbers, you know, I think we will get to that, get to that level. And then, of course, we've got outstanding ESER claims that have not been reimbursed at this point for some of the construction projects we did last summer, and some of the additional staffing costs that we had during, between January and the end of the school year. So I'd anticipate about 2.2 million dollars of COVID or ESER-related revenues that will flow into the financial statements to offset expenditures that are already in the financial Certainly, if you have any questions, I can respond to you now. If I don't have the answer, I can get back to you.
Questions, comments for Scott? Go ahead, Doug.
Since it is a preliminary, do you want formal approval, or should it come when you have a more specific one? Or should we, in the recommendation or the motion, approve the preliminary general fund?
Two years ago, looking back, we approved this as a preliminary, and actually, in the, all of the financial statements, I put in parentheses, preliminary as of June 30. So I agree, Doug, I think we would want some approval of these preliminary financials, but again, we will have revised June financial statements next month.
I'd move approval of the preliminary general fund financial statement.
Do we have a second? Second from Shannon. Further questions or comments? Seeing none, the motion is to have a preliminary approval, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Item 6F is school board committee and liaison appointments for 2021, 2022. Thank you all for filling out your forms, showing your interests. Dr. Brenner and I had some difficulties, because there were some committees and stuff that everybody almost wanted to be on, and according to our policies, we are limited to, most committees are limited in certain numbers. So I appreciate everybody's interest and desire to be on it. I know finance was one of those, but I've got a feeling a lot of the finance stuff is going to, after it goes through finance committees, is going to have to be dealt with quite heavily in the committee, the whole school board. So the recommendation is to approve these appointments. I'll open it up for questions, comments from board members. No questions or comments, and we need a motion to approve the committees and liaisons. Moved by Cynthia. Do we have a second? Second by Jackie. Any final questions or comments? Seeing none, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Termination of negotiations with SiteLogic. Scott?
Okay, we've got a memorandum on its last page of the board packet, 105. You know, I'll just read through this, as it really refers to a lot of, you know, the Century Code. An energy savings performance RFQ was established to provide Grand Forks Public Schools the ability to pursue financial solutions to long-term facility issues. The intent of the energy conservation measures was to select a firm to work with as we determine which buildings and projects best fit Grand Forks Public Schools' long-term facility goals. Grand Forks Public Schools Agency Selection Committee reviewed two submissions and scored the RFQ response, with SiteLogic being the selected firm. In accordance with North Dakota Century Code 54-44.7 and 48-05-09 through 45-05-13, Grand Forks Public Schools has been unable to negotiate a contract for energy savings performance services. SiteLogic was the selected firm, the board approved, to provide the service. In accordance with North Dakota Century Code 54-44.7-03, procurement procedures, I'm quoting here, should the governing body of the using agency or its designee be unable to negotiate a satisfactory contract with this person or firm, negotiations must formally be terminated. And so after that long-winded discussion, administrative recommendation is that the board terminate negotiations with SiteLogic to provide guaranteed energy savings performance services for the district.
Questions, comments? Seeing none, do we have a motion to terminate services? You have a motion, or you want to have a comment?
I have a motion to terminate services of SiteLogic.
Second by Jeff. Any further comments or questions? Go ahead, Cynthia.
So I emailed Chris and asked about, so what would be next? Do you have a timeline, which would, we would need to put it out again? So do you have a timeline as to when you're planning to put the proposal out for people to bid on again?
We have some, you know, some work and some, you know, things to figure out with. And of course, we've got the 10 mil question coming our way in, well, basically in two months and two days. You know, the CTE discussion that we've had tonight. So I think we just need some time to evaluate, again, which buildings and which energy components within facilities make sense. And I think that might, you know, I think we'd be probably looking at post-referendum or post-10 mil vote on when we would, you know, determine the next steps with that, as, you know, then we'd know whether or not we would have the 10 mils and the additional two and a half million dollars there. And then if we can complement that with an energy savings contract, you know, to provide improvements throughout our district at that point.
The reason that I asked is, the ESER funds also can be used for building HVAC consideration, so I wondered if you wouldn't need to be moving on what buildings are going to be, you know, selected to, for best projects with regards to that funding?
Well, you know, the ESER III application will, is due on August 17, so that will be coming at, you know, the first board meeting in August for discussion. You know, so that's, of course, that's another component that we have to determine, you know, what would be the final amount of ESER III dollars that potentially could go to HVAC improvement projects. And, you know, and if that's the case, how that would complement energy savings projects. So, you know, there's a, you know, a difference in a lot of cases between, you know, say, what we would look at from an energy savings perspective, you know, LED lighting and a variety of other types of improvements that wouldn't likely qualify under ESER versus an air quality improvement or an HVAC improvement. So I think we just have to kind of, you know, lay out all those things on the table, you know, what can we accomplish with ESER funding? Will the 10 mils be approved by the public? And then, you know, then lining, complementing that and lining it up with energy savings projects to, you know, provide the maximized, you know, benefit throughout our district.
Further questions or comments? Seeing none? We have a motion on the floor, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Move on to item 7A, announcements. Dr. Brenner, do you have any announcements? Dr. Lewis, do you have any announcements? I have one. If you haven't gone to SPA, it's fabulous as usual, but I think we're almost done with SPA. I think Freaky Friday has one more performance tomorrow. I don't know if it's sold out or not, but if you had a chance, it's really good. Board requests for future consideration? Any board requests? Jackie?
I was just curious, you know, we have this West picnic coming up in August 18. I think traditionally, PTOs kind of run any swag, sweatshirts, T-shirts, those types of things, but with West not being, you know, formally there for a while, we might not have that. I was wondering if, I don't know, if it would need to be community-led, or if the district could lead some sort of West apparel ordering for those who'd like to have something to take with them as West is closing. I think of people who have, who are West alum, right, who probably have grown out of their T-shirts and may want something to take with them. So just throwing that out there, and if you can get back to us sometime.
Probably a Friday focus. Cynthia?
This might be also, I'm interested in the summer school lunch update. I see the signs by the schools that lunches are available, and I see a few kids walking when I've gone by, so I'm just curious as to know how that's been going and what the need is, and, yeah, yeah, what the need has been.
Thank you. Shannon?
I've asked for it before, and we've had a really busy schedule, so I just want to renew the ask about social media practices and what we currently incorporate. I know it's been said that we incorporate something, but it'd be nice to have that understanding. I mean, we hear a lot about mental health here tonight of children and the self-harming and attempts that, you know, are clearly of grave concern within the state. I have a very sneaking suspicion that social media has a very interesting link to kind of, not only the way adolescents perceive themselves, but what social hierarchy is. And I've heard, I heard an interesting report on gun violence in certain areas being social media-driven disputes, which is, was a shocking data point that I need to look into, but, so I'm just, I'm very curious about what, if anything, you know, if there's stuff from the university and studies in childhood development and the connection with social media and anxiety, depression, and mental, mental well-being, and how maybe the district is considering, or if there's programming out there that we're taking advantage of. My initial request was, as a parent, somebody please explain to me all the social media platforms, because I don't know half of them, and my six-year-old is already asking me to download certain apps on my phone, and it takes hours of research for me to figure out whether I'm okay with it or not. So it's just a pretty, you know, we could even ask, like, Alicia and Evan to maybe give us a little presentation. We could have some active board participation in here. I'm sure they could school me in all things app-related. I know, I never, I never thought I was going to be in the generation that was like, help me figure out how to use my phone, but I'm now in that generation, so it's amazing how time flies.
Any other board requests? Amber?
I have one real quick. As we are aware of a large number of grants that we receive and the efforts of Tonya Slager, I am curious if the district would potentially consider hiring another grant writer or grant manager or something that could, you know, essentially pay for itself, but if a lot of those grants that are being supported are too much for one person, just the sheer opportunities that we have coming in, if the district is looking at potentially expanding that area as we apply and are granted more grants.
Okay. We look forward to reading those in Friday Focus or hearing them at the board level. Shannon, how did we do with school board norms?
I have no complaints in my complaint box, so I think we did pretty good.
Okay. Why don't we, we will go into executive session in five minutes, and we're going to talk about consultation and discussion on preparation mitigation response procedures to be taken in the event of safety concern at school board meetings. And then after we're done with the executive session, we will be adjourning immediately, saying that more for Pam than anybody, that we won't have any other business to you. So why don't we take five minutes and get things organized? So, and I...